Regular meeting number 15 will not come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, would you please lead us in the play to the legions?
To the legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Monsignor Cody is here to lead us in prayer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let us pray. God ever close to us, we acknowledge our dependence on your wisdom and grace as we pray this evening for the members of Columbus City Council gathered here in session. The responsibility they bear is great. Give them what they need to discern and decide the best way forward for the citizens of our city whom they're privileged to serve. We also ask, Lord, that they remember the plight of the poor, the homeless, the vulnerable, the forgotten, and the humble citizens of our city in the course of their deliberations. May our citizens and our great city become better and more responsive to the needs of all her citizens as this council meets this day. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Any person who takes action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317 dot 12. Any person who enters into these areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311 dot 21. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown? Councilmember Mitch Brown? Councilmember Reamie? Councilmember Page? President Protem?
Thank you, Council President Harden. A quick announcement, beginning Monday, March 19th, the Department of Public Utilities bill payment center will move from 910 Dublin Road to the Michael B. Coleman Government Center located at 111 North Front Street. Customers wishing to pay their utility bill in person can visit the new service desk on the first floor of the Coleman Building between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There is free short-term parking in the garage across Long Street, and a drop box is also available for after-hour payments. Bill payments will no longer be accepted at the 910 Dublin Road facility or in the treasurer's office inside City Hall. For more information, residents should contact 614-645-8276. And always a friendly reminder, you can also pay your bill online at www.onlineliler.com/columbus. It's the only announcement I have tonight. Thanks, President Harden.
Thank you, President Protem. This evening I have actually two resolutions, and I'd like to invite Ms. Azaleen Rodriguez and the Neader family to approach the podium. This evening I have Resolution 63X dash 2018 to present Empower Bus with the Reese Neader Memorial Award for Entrepreneurship and Social Change. Reese was a friend and mentor to many folks in this room. He represented the best of our city in so many ways. He added a positive energy that was contagious, and Reese used that energy to build a network of entrepreneurs with a long-term goal of creating jobs and improving neighborhoods. Reese brought to Columbus the Kiva Micro Loan Program and created Forge Columbus, which aimed to strengthen community businesses. Reese passed away in December of 2016 at the age of 34. To further carry on the legacy of Reese Neader and recognize entrepreneurs working towards the common good, Columbus City Council established the Reese Neader Memorial Award for Entrepreneurship and Social Change. The Reese Neader Award is presented quarterly to a small business or entrepreneur in Columbus working to improve neighborhoods, create jobs, and boost the quality of life of people in Columbus. I'm proud to present this quarter's memorial award to Empower Bus LLC. Empower Bus was founded in 2017 with the goal of providing reliable transportation to connect underserved communities with jobs, education, and healthcare. First, are there any questions or comments from members of my colleagues? Seeing none, Azaleen, I'm gonna actually turn the floor over to you, and I'll pass it after you, say a few words.
Thank you, Council President Harden and the esteemed council, and I thank you so much for this amazing award. I want to start with a quote that I'm sure we're all familiar with. "I've learned that people will forget what you say, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel," Maya Angelou. I say this because in receiving this award, I remember meeting Reese, and I remember how he made me feel. I remember how excited I was for what Columbus could be and the vision that he had, and it's what we do at Empower Bus. We're not a transportation company. We're strengthening the roads to social mobility by providing dignified, reliable, on-time transportation to and from work, employment, work, education, and healthcare opportunities for communities that we call asset communities. Some folks call them at-risk, others call them under-resourced, and we think that these communities have the assets to be a rich community, and we want these folks to feel empowered, to feel that they truly can be stable folks for their families' generations to come. I'm second generation, and my grandparents came here and worked in factories and in stone mills, and two generations later, their grandkids have all gone to college, and we are their dream. And I want the folks that we serve to feel that we care, that we want them to live dignified, full, and happy lives, and I am very, very honored to accept this amazing award on behalf of Empower Bus, and I thank you so much for gifting us Reese in this world. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Azaleen. Ms. Neader, I wanted to also give the podium to you if you'd like to speak. I just want to thank you so much for coming down. You have allowed us to recognize Reese and the work that he's done for this community for the last several years, and we just appreciate your support, and thank you again.
It's a pleasure to, you know, for him to be, you know, recognized in this way. It's immense, it's wonderful, and it's great to meet the people that he inspired to.
Thank you for sharing with us. Seeing no further question or comments, I move for passage. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Adopt it. I also have a second resolution that I'd like to read. At this point, I'd invite Kelsey Johnson of the Create Columbus Commission and Mr. John Rush to the podium, and any members of the Create Columbus Commission that would like to come forward. I have Resolution 64X dash 2018 to commemorate the accomplishments of Kelsey Johnson and congratulate her on being named the Create Columbus Commission Visionary Award winner. Kelsey Johnson is the Managing Director at She Has a Name Cleaning Services, focusing on training and employment for victims of human trafficking and domestic violence. Mrs. Johnson has built strong coalitions in the anti-human trafficking space by planning and advocating with Catch Court, the Coalition to End Human Trafficking, and She Has a Name Ministries. The Create Columbus Commission has unanimously chosen to honor Kelsey Johnson as an outstanding Columbus young professional for her work with She Has a Name Cleaning Services and her service to the people of Columbus. Thank you so much for being here. This is, again, a part of a tradition of joining with the Create Columbus Commission to recognize folks who are really working our community to create social change. The podium is yours.
Well, first off, I would like to step in and say good evening, President Harden and the rest of Columbus City Council, and we thank you all. My name is Dr. Chanel Jones, and on behalf of the Create Columbus Commission, I just thank you once again for allowing us to partner with you and to recognize Kelsey. She has done a tremendous amount of work as the Managing Director for She Has a Name, and congratulations. I'll give you the podium.
Thanks, Dr. Jones. Wow, I was really surprised when I kind of got a call about a week ago. Didn't expect this, so really just thanks, City Council, thank you, commission, people behind me. So I really didn't do this alone. John Rush is here. I work for Clean Turn, and so part of a bigger family, bigger mission, bigger picture we want to accomplish. So I really admire just that you value the work that we're doing at She Has a Name Cleaning. So this award just kind of proves, and it's just a good reminder to encourage me to move forward and continue to do what we do every day. Again, we get to offer employment to individuals who've been affected by some really traumatic events, human trafficking, domestic violence, addiction, maybe all of those, so we get to kind of join them hand in hand and empower them. So by you empowering me, I get to kind of just push that on, so thank you again. I really appreciate the recognition.
Thank you so much for your work, Kelsey. Mr. Rush, do you have any comments?
Just briefly, because Kelsey's very humble, and so she started with her and one other person two years, a little over two years ago, and has been able to employ a little over 200 survivors of human trafficking and domestic violence, folks coming out of addiction. Roughly 40% of the folks that she has spearheaded and employing have either, are still with us or have used us as a stepping stone to move on to other opportunities in the marketplace, and currently manages a team of about 60 full-time employees. And so it's been remarkable to see her leadership in this space, addressing the needs of survivors in our community, and to be able to speak into the broader business community on how to create policies that are conducive to hiring folks who've had challenging backgrounds. And so in a month where we honor the leadership and expertise and brilliance of women, I think this is more than appropriate to be able to recognize Kelsey and all of the ladies that are at She Has a Name Cleaning that do great work every day of the year. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rush, and thank you, Dr. Jones. Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues? One second. Seeing no comments, I move for adoption. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Adopt it. Are there any comments by our elected officials, Madam Auditor, City Treasurer, City Attorney's Office? I see Judge Barrows is here. Thank you. How are you, sir? The commissions are here. Any comments? Thank you, thank you, thank you. At this time, I request that ordinance 0639 dash 2018 be removed from the Public Service and Transportation portion of the consent agenda. Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of ordinance or resolutions from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of the titles of the 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee, ordinance 656 dash 2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 37X dash 2018. Ordinances 536, 573, 669, 672, and 688 dash 2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 509, 524, 533, 540, 543, 553, and 579 dash 2018. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 611 dash 2018.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinances into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 57X, 58X, 59X, 60X, and 61X dash 2018. Finance Committee, ordinance is 425, 544, and 620 dash 2018. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 457, 459, 469, 470, 480, and 510 dash 2018. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 628, 673, and 675 dash 2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 433, and 637 dash 2018. Housing Committee, ordinance is 444, 547, and 556 dash 2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 585, 586, and 587 dash 2018. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 500, 546, 585, 92, 614 dash 2018. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0081 and A0082 dash 2018.
We have one speaker on the consent agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins, speaking on ordinance number 0556 dash 2018. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
I'm glad to be back in the house, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Chairman Sullivan Bacon, and property in North London area. I got a couple of questions on ordinance number 055, 055, 6, 2018. I'm not against this or for this right now, but I need to know what is this money going to be used for, for $150,000? I don't think it's not enough, but I'm questioning for $278,000 for this, if I can get more clarification on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director McGuinness, 0556, in the Housing Committee, if you would follow up with Mr. Wilkins, I appreciate that. Thank you. Seeing no more speakers on the consent agenda, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Clerk, call the roll by voice. Our clerk called the roll, apologize.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass. We will now proceed with the reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee, that is chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance Committee, we have ordinance 0465 dash 2018 to authorize the city treasurer to modify its contracts for various banking services with J.P. Morgan, Chase Bank, Huntington Bank, and Fifth Third Bank to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,663,000 from various funds within the city. In 2012, the Columbus City Treasurer's Office issued a request for proposal for banking services. The Columbus Depository Commission, which is the city treasurer, city auditor, and director of finance and management, received and reviewed proposals from six local banks and recommended, subject to the approval of city council, the award of banking services to the banks in the title of this legislation. The Depository Commission approved applications for the deposit of public funds with each of these banks. The contracts are for a period of 10 years, beginning in 2013, and subject to annual appropriations and approval by city council. This ordinance therefore represents the sixth of 10 possible extensions of the original contracts for banking services bid in 2012. And city treasurer, Cle, I don't know if you have anything to add. It is fine if not, but did want to give you the chance if so. Thank you so much. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0593 dash 2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to contract with Experienced Columbus for marketing services to increase tourism and convention business and strengthen the image of the city of Columbus, to authorize the expenditure of $10,118,000 from the Hotel Motel excise tax fund and to declare an emergency. Columbus City Code specifies that approximately, just under half, 48%, of the 5.1% hotel motel tax be used for the promotion of the city. For 2018, that portion of the tax is projected to be $10,118,000 and is provided to Experienced Columbus for this purpose. Experienced Columbus is governed by a board of directors and supported by more than 1,000 members who invest in efforts to help make Greater Columbus an appealing destination. Visitors to Columbus spend $6.4 billion in Columbus annually, and tourism supports one in every 12 jobs in Franklin County. It is estimated that individuals visiting Columbus pay $1.13 billion in local, state, and federal taxes. This tax revenue helps support the arts, human services, and economic development in Franklin County. For these reasons, the city and its citizens directly benefit from the work of Experienced Columbus and their continued support. Emergency action is being considered so that the operations of Experienced Columbus are not interrupted. Anything my colleagues would like to add or any questions? I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have in finance, but I have one piece in Recreation and Parks. May I move to that, President Harden?
Please.
Tonight in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 0471 dash 2018 to authorize the director of the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into contract with Moody Nolan Incorporated for the design of the redevelopment of Linden Park and Community Center, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate, transfer, and expend $2,179,000 between projects within the Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget ordinance 1124 dash 2017, and to declare an emergency. The Linden Park redevelopment project started in 2015 with the proposed renovation of the park pond through the blueprint plan. Recreation and Parks held community meetings, and plans were made to conduct park improvements in conjunction with the pond work. These plans were delayed due to feasibility issues with work on the pond, and Recreation and Parks decided to look at the park as a whole, including the Linden Community Center. In early 2017, plans were made for the complete redevelopment of the park and its facilities. These are truly exciting improvements to the park space that will be used by residents for years to come. The renovation of the rec center will allow for more programs to be offered, including improved health and wellness programming and many other things. Emergency action is being considered so that the design work may begin immediately and construction work may be bid out later this year. Before I move for passage, I wanted to give Director Collins the opportunity to add anything.
Thank you, Chair Brown, President Council, members of council. We're very excited about this project. This is going to be a game changer in the Linden neighborhood and Linden community. This is not just a community center renovation, this is a complete rebuild of a new recreation community center. In fact, it'll be what we call our first demonstration site of what a center for opportunity can be in the city of Columbus. We're inviting partners to come along with us on this journey. We're excited about the planning process. We not only are involving our internal teams here with the city, our Department of Public Service, Public Utilities, to come along and help us with this, but also other entities and partners throughout Columbus that'll be a project. And as Councilmember Brown mentioned, this is also a complete redo, a relook at the park as well, to include new amenities, playground, splash pad, walking paths. So it'll be a real investment from the city in the Linden neighborhood.
It's going to be pretty great. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you to Councilmember Page for her leadership and support over the last two years on this project. Are there any other questions or comments? I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have in my committees, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Mitch Brown chairs that committee. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, we have ordinance 50541 dash 2018 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate to all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of body worn cameras, accessories, and video management systems for the Division of Police, to authorize the expenditure of $370,000 from the General Perment Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. Director Stewart, would you bring this council up to speed on the status of the body worn camera implementation, please?
Yes, sir. President Harden, President Protem, Stenziano, Councilmember Brown. This is a continuation of the body worn camera initiative that began in 2016. At the end of 2017, there were a total of 575 cameras that had been dispensed. Currently effective at the end of business tomorrow, there will be 856 cameras that will actually be issued on the street. This payment will represent the payment for approximately 400 cameras, which should end the commitment to the purchase of the cameras at this point. Effective, I'm sorry, the rollout has proceeded very smoothly, and it's anticipated by the end of June rather than the end of this year. The end of June, the rollout of the cameras will be complete, and it will be approximately 1,250 cameras, a little over 1,250 cameras that will actually be on the street.
If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Ordinance number 0613 2018 to authorize and direct the director of public safety to contract with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners and expend funds for the use of the Franklin County Correction Centers for the housing of prisoners, to authorize the expenditure of $3.9 million from the general fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Ordinance 0643 2018 to authorize the director of public safety to modify the current contract with change healthcare for EMS billing, collection, and reporting services for the Division of Fire, to authorize the expenditure of $1.5 million for the collection services and $125,000 for refunds from the general fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 0687 dash 2018 to authorize and direct the director of Department of Public Safety to pay the city's proportionate share for operational and administrative support activities of the Franklin County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Program, including the mass notification system, to authorize the expenditure of $772,424 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Stewart, would you provide additional information with regards to this subject matter, please?
Yes, sir. Again, President Harden, President Stenziano, Councilmember Brown. This represents our annual payment towards the Franklin County EMA and represents their operation of sirens and the maintenance of the relocation of activation of such systems for inclement weather, storms, et cetera. The agency operates such activities, including planning, disaster recovery, public education and exercises. And additionally, this agency is also serving as the lead agency for implementation of maintenance of mass warning systems, such as telephone messages, text messages, and emails. Other considerations include preferred languages and mechanisms to teach, to reach folks who are visually and hearing impaired.
Director Stewart, when do they plan to start with the text messaging capability? Do you know?
That's actually being rolled out as we speak. They're in the final testing phases of that. We discussed that today.
Thank you. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 0740 dash 2018 to repeal ordinance number 0400 dash 2013, which limits the number of tax cans permitted to operate in the city, to remove the limit on the number of tax cans permitted to operate in the city and to declare an emergency. I held a public hearing on this ordinance on March 1st to collect public comment on the subject. After receiving public testimony, my staff and the Department of Public Safety have crafted the ordinance presented tonight. Based on the recommendations of the Vehicle for Hire Board, I encourage my colleagues to vote for passage. If there are no questions, I move for passage. Councilmember Stenziano was at the hearing. Would you have any comments, sir?
Sorry. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamie, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, that's all we have in public. President Harden, that's all we have in public safety.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee that we have come for council is the Public Service Committee. Councilmember Emmanuel Remy is chair. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Ordinance number 0639-2018, I moved to table for one week.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Ordinance tabled.
Thank you. That's all I have in public service.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee. Councilmember Page is chair. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in housing, we have ordinance 0554-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with up to 10 contractors to provide lawn care services on city-owned property held in the land bank, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code to appropriate $207,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Land Management Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $500,000 from the Land Management Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Department of Development to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329. 20 companies responded to an RFQ. All of the bids were reviewed and ranked by an evaluation committee based on the criteria established in the bid solicitation. The final amounts for each original contract will be determined by the Director of Development based on the number of properties acquired by the program and the maintenance services needed. If funding remains after the establishment of each of the original contracts, it may be necessary to modify the funding of the original contracts until the $500,000 is encumbered. Are there any additional comments from the department?
Chair Page, President Harden, members of council, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
And our final ordinance in housing is 0555-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with nine contractors to provide maintenance services on city-owned property being held in the land bank, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code to authorize an appropriation of $374,000 from the Land Management Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $550,000 from the Land Management Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all we have in housing this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. The committee is chaired by President Protim Stenziano. Chair Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 0458-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the complete general construction company for the 2017 general construction contract for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, to authorize the transfer of $177,496 within and the expenditure of up to $1,907,496 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to authorize a transfer within an expenditure of up to $183,642 from the Storm Build America Bond Fund, to authorize the transfer within an expenditure of up to $737,858 from the Storm Recovery Zone Super Build America Bond Fund, and to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget. This project was initiated to respond to emergency needs and miscellaneous sanitary and storm sewer structural repairs and installations as directed by the Division of Sewerage and Drainage. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
The last ordinance is 0648-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with K&amp;M Cleaning Service Incorporated to provide janitorial services for various facilities of the Department of Public Utilities, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, to authorize the expenditure of $255,307.14 from the Sewer System Operating Fund and declare an emergency. These services will be provided at the Southerly Wastewater Treatment Plant, Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, Compost Facility, and the Sewer Maintenance Operations Center. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all we have this evening, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. If we can go back to the Public Service and Transportation Committee and go back to ordinance 0639-2017, I'm going to move to reconsider. Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy? Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Harden.
Removed from the table, or reconsidered, and now may I get a motion to table for two weeks by voice?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page? Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Harden.
Tabled for two weeks. There is no further business to come before council. May I get a motion to adjourn? Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Meeting adjourned. We will take speakers momentarily. Regular meeting number 16 will not come to order. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember Page is co-chair of the committee. Chair of the committee is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Before beginning our zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speakers before council and zoning's invariances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, to please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Is Mr. McCann standing?
Yep.
I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. 0610-2018 to rezone 777 North Fourth Street, being approximately .79 acres located on the west side of North Fourth Street, approximately 60 feet north of Warren Street from M Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is LCO1 LLC. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Is the applicant present? Emma like to make any additional comments?
No.
I don't see anyone from the area commission. We do not have any speakers. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
And our final variances evening 0612-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332-037 R2F Residential District, 331249 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3321-05 Vision Clearance, 333214 R2F Area District Requirements, and 333225 Maximum Side Yards Required for the property located at 374th Street to permit a six-unit apartment building in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is Creative Collaborative. The proposed use is a six-unit apartment building. The city department's recommendation is approval. Columbus Southside Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Is the applicant present? Emma like to make any additional comments? We do have one speaker speaking against this variance, Mr. Brian McCann. Mr. McCann, if you could please come down to the podium, and if you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, as well as your address, and you have three minutes. Thank you so much, and welcome to council.
Thank you, council members, and Council President Harden and Council Chair Page. I'm Brian McCann. I live at 20 East Deschler Apartment 4 in Columbus. I am representing Jim Daly, who is the adjacent property owner to the east. We know that probably, given the staff recommendation, that, you know, we're probably going to see this thing approved anyways, but one of the things that are important to us is the fact that being the adjacent property owner to the east, we believe that parking is going to be a major factor here. And in this particular zoning application, what we have is we have a, what was formerly a four-unit building, illegally converted by a previous owner into a six-unit building. So tonight, this parking waiver essentially is granting legal sanction to something that was illegally done by a property owner or two ago. So Mr. Daly has asked me to come in and express his concern about this and to say that, you know, this waiver should not be granted, and that basically, and this is not probably related to tonight, but another matter, is that this really was designed to be a four-unit building and should be a four-unit building. Given that, that is basically the essence of our opposition.
Thank you.
Available for any questions if there are any.
Thank you. You still have a little over a minute if you have any additional comments.
I make a short briefcase.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. McCann? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The applicant now has the opportunity for rebuttal. Welcome to council, and if you could please state your name and your association with Creative Collaborative.
Yeah, I'm one. My name's Alex Picazo. I am one of the owners. We've hired Creative Collaborative, which is the architect on this project. We did purchase this building. It was six units when we purchased it. We were not aware of, you know, the fact that it was illegally converted, but we wanted to take the proper steps to get the right permits, and it was only once we pulled the proper permits that we found out that it actually was illegally converted. That's where we asked for this variance. I think, you know, one option is that it sits as it has been for years, not really adding to the neighborhood, and we're hoping to not go down that path and actually fix it up, not change anything of how it currently is, just fix it up and get it back up to where it needs to be. And also very, very interested in communicating with Mr. Daly on any concerns he has. I've actually reached out to him for the past six months. I'm not sure why I haven't been able to get ahold of him, but again, very interested in being a good neighbor, and will continue to do our best to be good neighbors to the neighborhood. So with that said, I don't think I need any more time, but if anyone has a question, it's happy to discuss.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Uh-uh.
I do have one question. There is an additional request to amend this variance to emergency, and if either you or your architect who is present could speak to that.
Yeah, we purchased this building over six months ago, and we had our contractors lined up to really make fast work of it and get this where it needed to be. It's been very tough to keep them ready to go, and so they finally have a window where they are ready to go right now, and if we can't get started soon, it's going to be really tough to get this project moving and get it to where everybody wants it to be.
Thank you. Councilmember, President Protim Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did the parking variance issue come up when you went before the area commission, and if so, what was the discussion?
It did come up. Everyone had a chance to talk, and there was not really any discussion other than establishing that this was something that was already there. We're just trying to maintain it through the proper course. Obviously, some people mentioned there's concern about parking, but no one had a really good suggestion on another thing to do, other than, I think there was maybe one person who opposed it. Everyone else unanimously agreed.
How long, do you know, to your knowledge, how long it's been a six unit, and are you intending to rent or to sell these units?
We're intending to rent the units. It's really hard to say how long it's been a six unit. I know that within a year before we purchased it, it was occupied. I don't know if it was fully occupied or how that works, but it's obvious that people did things that weren't necessarily the right way, so it's hard to really track down at what time those things happened.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, I would first like to move to amend to emergency.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
I'm, I'm going to emergency.
I now move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chair Page. Seeing no more, no further business to come before the zoning committee, may I get a motion to adjourn? Second. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, President Harden.
Be stand adjourned.